Well, hello, everybody. Today is our Public Works Commission meeting. It's on July 12th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. South Pasadena Public Works Commission Statement of Civility. As your elected governing board, we will treat each other, members of the public and the city employees with patience, ability and courtesy as a model of the same behavior we wish to reflect in South Pasadena for the conduct of all city business and community participation. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of South Pasadena community and not for personal gain. We do have public participation. We offer that live as we also offer it via Zoom, which you're watching right now. And there are many, the ways are listed here where you can access and you could go to the website to get more information about that if you would wish to seek it via Zoom or you're welcome to join us live at any time. The Public Works Commission welcomes the public input. If you'd like to comment on the agenda item, members of the public may participate by means of one of the following options. Option number one, participants will be able to raise their hand using the Zoom on con during the meeting and they will have the microphone unmuted during the comment portion of the agenda to speak up for three minutes. Or option number two, email the public comments to our email. Public comments received in writing will not be read aloud at the meeting, but will be a part of the meeting record. Within public comments will be uploaded online for public viewing. Under the additional documents, there is no word limit on email public comments. Please make sure to indicate your name optional and what agenda item you're submitting public comment on. And number three, submit no later than 12:00 PM on Wednesday, the 12th. So always 12:00 PM before any of our meetings. With that said, I'll do the call to order. And I'll let you do the roll call.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mally. Vice Chair Ryan Jones. Commissioner Sam Hernandez.
Present.
Commissioner David Mally.
Present.
And Commissioner Charles Trevino is not attending this evening. City Council Liaison is not in attendance at this time. And Staff President Director of Public Works Ted Gerber is here. And Staff Public Works Management Analyst, myself, Rena is here. And we're good to go.
With that said, I will hand off the pledge allegiance over to Ryan.
Please stand in face of the flag, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the state of America.
Great. And with that said, Rena, our first agenda item is public comments. Do we have any comments for this meeting?
No public comments this evening. Thank you.
Great. So that takes us over to discussion items. The sewer system repair rehabilitation replacement. And with that said, I'm going to hand it off to you, Ted Gerbert. Tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Commissioner Mally. So as we'll present to you later this evening, we have our 2023-2024 work plan. And one of the items on that work plan is the city sewer system repair plans, which includes repair rehabilitation or replacement depending on the circumstance. So we have a brief presentation for you tonight to go over where we are in this process. Rena, if you don't mind, go into the next slide. So the city has, just like any other city, the city has a sewer collection system. So we don't have our own treatment works. We basically have a small system that gravity collects sewage and then it connects into LA County Sanitation District System. And they actually take on our sewage and treat it like other cities in the county. And so we would, we are responsible for repairing and maintaining that small diameter gravity pipeline collection system. Now, normally we would do our regular repairs, regular inspection and repairs. And we have a, a plan, an asset management plan that Corolo has developed for us. A what we call it the One Water 2050 Plan that shows us where we need to prioritize sewer repairs based on condition. However, in addition to that, the city underwent quite a bit of extensive sewer rehabilitation some years ago. And that was a result of a consent judgment that was given to the city from the Regional Water Quality Control Board in 2011. Essentially, the city had some parts of the sewer system that had collapsed or were not in good condition. And so the city suffered some sewer overflows. That's when there's a blockage in the system and the sewer will come up through a manhole and spill onto the street. And so as a result of those overflows, the state basically gave a court order for the city to make improvements. And the city made a large percent of those improvements. That sewer con judgment from 2011, it contained all the elements you see on this screen. So a comprehensive list of where the sewer replacements had to be made. And you'll see that CD or one, two, that'll make sense on our next slide. Submittal of quarterly reports, the city had to implement an asset management system. Had to conduct a flow and capacity study. So essentially identify that the amount of flow coming from residences and businesses. The city sewer system is large enough to accommodate that flow to pass it on to the county. Regular video analysis of the sewer systems. We actually put a camera in the sewer and video through it to see if there's cracks or roots or disconnected components. Quarterly reports, a, what we call a fog program. So this largely focuses on the city's restaurants that would generate food grease. And so there's a program that those restaurants required to capture that food grease and not let it get into the sewer system. And so we have basically a fog inspection program. And then we also have our hotspot program, which is our staff identifies locations that have problematic areas, whether it's because there's like a interesting, you know, the way the sewer is configured in that location, things might get stuck there or there's heavy roots in that location. So we are aware of those and we fix those. And then also this consent judgment included staff training. So the city spent years going through all these requirements. But what I want to focus on is the actual repair work on that first bullet. And then the subsequent video analysis on that fifth bullet. We can go to the next slide. So in this consent judgment, there was a rating system. Now, this isn't a standard rating system. We actually use a different kind of rating system when we're looking at sewer videos and we're assessing whether something, you know, meets a certain, you know, if it's in good quality or if it's in a quality that needs to be repaired. But this was the rating system that the court order included. And so it basically had an A through D rating and a one through four rating. The A through D applied to like the general overall condition of a length of sewer. So AB was considered basically passing and CD was considered locations that needed to be fixed. And the same thing applied through one through four. One and two, in a kind of a pinpoint perspective. So where A through D was kind of like a general area of the sewer, one through four was a specific location, like a, like a specific spot on the sewer. And so one and two were things that needed to be fixed and three and four were basically things that were like, you know, monitor these problems, but they don't necessarily be fixed. So the sewer consent judgment said repair C, D, one and two. So we can jump to the next slide, Rena. Thank you. And so in evaluating how far along we are in the sewer consent judgment, because we have not actually completed all the work that the consent judgment required, we've been working with a consultant to identify where we were supposed to make these repairs. So you can see from the color coding here, the green C or D or the purple one or two was where the city was rated in those locations. You can see a large percentage of the sewer system needed this repair. Can jump to the next slide, Rena. And so this kind of breaks down the size of the sewer. You can see most of the sewer is smaller diameter, six, eight inch stuff, the larger diameter 12, 15, 18. A little less of that, but there was quite a bit in comparison. You can see from that map of the sewer system that met the CD or one, two condition. Thank you, Rena. So the city underwent two phases of major repair projects. And so the blue area here is what we call a CIPP repair, a cured in place line, pipeline lining, basically inserting a new thin pipe inside the existing pipe. And we do this by, most of the time it's like a, it's like a sock, like a felt material that gets inserted and then it gets filled with epoxy and then it hardens. And so you basically have a new sewer line inside the old sewer line. It doesn't really matter what the condition of the old, usually clay sewer line is. It could be cracked or broken. You got a brand new plastic epoxy line in its place.
What's the life expectancy on that new line that's going in?
It's very long. Usually when we're modeling it, we can model it as like 80 or 100 years for a plastic pipe. Now, vitrified clay has a very long life also because it can basically last forever, but it's incredibly brittle. So if it's not installed correctly, if there's a root problem, then it, it basically can fail like immediately. If it were left alone and there was no problems, it would be fine for a long period of time. But yeah, in either case, they're supposed to last a long time. It's just that clay does not do well in a root environment, basically. And there's a lot of roots in the city.
So the root system would still penetrate through that?
It doesn't penetrate through the plastic line. The reason that roots enter a sewer line is because clay pipes are cast. They're, you know, they're fired in a kiln and then you basically connect them together with a rubber gasket. So it's not a water tight seal and the roots find that joint and then they get inside. Plastic pipes, they don't have that joint. They're continuous. And so you don't have that issue.
We had to replace one 18 inch head wittier.
A clay line? Yeah, probably that's that problem. Yeah. Yeah, it can be very challenging. When you get to larger and larger pipelines, we can do like a slip lining. We can actually insert a solid plastic line inside it. But the smaller diameter are better to do that like sock approach. And so this kind of breaks down all of the different repairs. And you can see, so a large portion of the city was actually repaired. So that's a good thing. Oh, you're fine. But in our analysis, and this is what we're doing right now, is basically looking for that gap. What did the 2011 consent judgment require versus what was actually done? And we found, sorry, Rena, you're fine. You could jump to the next slide, I think. Yes. So you can see this is our most, this is our most recent gap analysis. These blue areas are the areas that we missed. Now, we only think it's about 5% of what was required, but it's not, you know, 95% is not 100%. So now we have to reconsider this and actually get these locations repaired. Now, the other thing I mentioned earlier in the presentation is that the consent judgment requires regular video analysis of the sewer to see how the condition changes over time. And so the consent judgment requires if any segments become a C or a D or become a one or a two over time, now they have to be added in to the repair scenario. And so that was our most recent effort was actually taking a look at the sewer video that was done recently and seeing what had, what condition has changed. And if you jump to the next slide, Rena, well, actually, I think the next slide is just a summary of what's left to fix. Like I said, it's like a 5% gap on the original list. And if you jump to the next slide, Rena. And so we have a couple of different scenarios that we're looking at. Because we're looking at video footage of sewers and we have to make a determination of whether something is a high priority fix or a medium priority fix or whether it's something that was previously fixed that now has some sort of problem with it. In other words, like the repair that was done, maybe the sock liner repair didn't, wasn't done correctly and now it's a, we have to repair it again. So this just shows one scenario, which is the high priority fix. So these are, in addition to the gap that we didn't close, this is newer, not newer sewers, but newer problems that have surfaced since that time. And so now these will also have to be repaired. So essentially our plan moving forward is now that we have identified all these locations, which is, you know, a big part of the job is breaking these projects off into, you know, individual repair locations. Some can be grouped with street improvement projects. Some can be grouped with, you know, water liner pairs or other utility repairs. And so we're developing a set of projects to go through and basically catch up and get these locations fixed. Some of them are lining, which doesn't require any excavation. We can literally open the manhole and do the lining from the manhole. Others are actual spot repairs. And so you can see that's clear here, like the blue ones are linings. The green ones are spot repairs. So not entire, that entire section is repaired. Maybe one or two locations have to be dug up and fixed. And then the orange ones are the ones that are really the issue. Those are replacements. Like we have to, we have to actually excavate and replace the line in those locations. So I think we can jump to the next slide. So our next steps are just that. We have to summarize all this information back to the regional board because we still are under this consent judgment. We have to continue our quarterly reports to the regional board about how we're progressing and getting all this work done. And then like I just mentioned, we have to get these projects developed so we can actually eventually get this process closed out and catch up and be back to our regular routine sewer repair, preventative maintenance work instead of going back in after, you know, after the issues already have been presented.
These repairs are being done and you don't have all the sewer lines turned off. So it has to be done while it's in operation.
Yeah. At this, so when you're doing a, when you're doing like a major lining project, you like, for example,
You divert.
Yeah, you have to divert. So LA County is actually planning a major lining project on their trunk line that goes down Garfield Avenue. So we're helping prepare them for that. And that will be an interesting project where we'll literally have to stop sewage in some locations. The, the good thing is you can kind of segment it. So you only have to deal with one little spot at a time. For the collection system, you know, you can basically take advantage of the fact that it's not really flowing all the time. You can, you know, you can do a small bypass. You can notify people that they can't, you know, just like a water shut off that like from this time, this time you can't use your toilets and your showers. And then there, we're, we get in, we get it done. And then you're, by the evening, they're, they're back on the system. So yeah, there is some coordination work.
This seems to be working well. I guess the question I have is, would this also work for water lines besides sewage lines?
Sure. So we have a different approach when we evaluate the water lines. Because the water lines, you're fine, we can go to the slide. Because the, the real issue with the sewer condition is whether they're cracked or obstructed. For water lines, they're always under pressure. And so it's not really an issue of like a break or obstruction. If there's a break, we know about it. I mean, there's a problem.
And I know that we've had three or four breaks in the last.
Yes, exactly. So you're exactly right. So in those cases, it's about the, it's really about the external condition that causes the issue. And so for water lines, the, the preferred approach would be that we replace them before they break during a street project. But we certainly know where all the breaks are. So as we're doing the street improvements, we're basically just replacing those water lines. Yeah.
Thank you. Great. Any other questions? Good. Well, thank you, Ted. With that said, let's get to the action items. The adoption of the fiscal year for 2022, 23 annual report and the fiscal year for 2023, 24 work plan.
Terrific. So this is a joint, a double item here. We're basically presenting to you tonight the, the commission's accomplishments for the past fiscal year. And so we had several meetings, a piece on these topics. And so we broke it down into basically summarize the items. And these were also what was presented at the Commissioner Congress a couple of weeks ago. The only difference here is we, we went into a little bit more detail. So we're not going to read this to you. But basically the annual report is consists of a message from our vice chair, a statement of what the Public Works Commission's charter is all about. And, you know, the makeup of the commission. And then we have our accomplishments. So we had our city hall fleet electrification infrastructure projects. And that was a big item, if you remember, it included the police vehicle conversion, included, you know, getting, making a deal with Edison to build the infrastructure for us, doing our own component of the infrastructure and then also working with the Clean Power Alliance to build a solar array. So all those projects are underway. You, as you know, the police conversion is already happening. Vehicles are getting produced right now. Edison is in their design phase for our electric vehicle chargers. And the solar array is still in the bidding phase. They've actually entered into the second round of their bidding for a developer who will build that site. So those are going very well. And thank you to the commission to help me facilitate those projects. We did a, we did a evaluation of our West Side Reservoir. If you remember, we took a look at the slope stability about the, the, we had a dive inspection. We looked at the condition, made some recommendations to the council to move on to the next step. And so we've met with our consultant to basically start the early design process. And so we'll be talking about that. It's also on our work plan. You'll see in a moment here. And then lastly, we got some really great feedback from the commission about our stormwater project design. So we are working on that now. We're tweaking a few things. And so we're hoping to finalize that design sometime in the next couple of months so that we can be in construction by 2024. And so then on to our work plan, what's what we, our goals for this coming year. We want to make the recreational facility improvements that we have been talking about. We have our pocket park designs nearly complete. We want to bid those projects. And so we'll be talking to the commission about that work to be constructed this fiscal year. We are currently working on a a scope to do the civil design for the remaining netting poles at the driving range. If you recall, the poles on the north side fell down about a year ago. We replaced them, put up new netting, new steel poles and did a, a wind loading design to make sure that they stay up. We want to do the same thing for the remainder of the, on the nature park side and then on the, the south side. So we'll be working on that. And then we also want to look at conceptual designs for the Snake Trail, which is that trail that goes from, I think it's rolling up to, up to the Southwest Hills. And so we want to take a look at what type of accessibility or lighting improvements we can make there. So that's one of our plans. We talked about the sewer system repair rehabilitation tonight. We'll keep you updated on our progress on that. Like I mentioned, we want to get into the West Side Reservoir design so we can be in construction soon on that project. And then also keeping you apprised of how, as we start to build the San Pasquale wetland and then also the Sistern Stormwater Project that we talked about here at the commission as well. That's basically storing stormwater underneath the solar panels that we'll build here in the mountain park. So that's our work plan for the year. Any questions or comments?
We're good, right? Good. With that said, let's go over to the minutes and approval. Rena, we'll let you handle that.
Thank you so much. So before we get into the minutes, our item number three, the presentation that Ted just showed for the annual report as well as the work plan. It is in need of a motion for adoption. Do I have a motion to adopt the report?
Oh, I'll make that motion.
And I will second that.
Thank you so much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with three votes. Okay. Thank you so much. And for item number four, minutes for the regular meeting of the Public Works Commission on March 8th, 2023 with revisions. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I will make that motion.
Okay.
Second that.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously with three votes. And with action, item number five, minutes of the regular meeting of the Public Works Commission for May 10th, 2023. May I get a motion for approval? Perfect. Thank you so much.
Second that.
Second. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously with three votes.
Good. Communications, we'll start off with the city council. Any words of wisdom coming from Sam?
No, I, everything is just peachy keen. We had a wonderful Fourth of July Festival of Balloons. We have a presentation here that was left over by our Assemblyman Mike Fong, made the presentation to, to our mayor premise. And they did an absolutely wonderful, wonderful job. Now that the city has taken over the Festival of Balloons, they relieved many of us older gentlemen and ladies from having to put the parade together. And they absolutely did a bang up job. Unfortunately, the field wasn't ready for us. Once again, the high school field is still being under construction. But the stands were available and I understand that it was sold out. So, which is about 1,500 people. So congratulations to them. The float made its way down the parade route. We have a wonderful design. A little controversy on the name of it, but I think that we've resolved that, I think, I hope. Because construction is still going on. Let's see, what else is there? I don't want to bring anything bad into anything. So I won't talk about the farmer's market and the, and the museum right now. So we'll hold off on that. But other than that, I think everything's going along well. So.
Well, great, Sam. Thank you. And nothing for me. We give always the floor to Sam Hernandez. And as a result, we'll continue accordingly. With that said, Commissioners Communication, City Council Liaison. Our councilman's not here. With that said, we'll go to Staff Liaison, Ted or Rena?
I just have one item. Rena, I don't think you have any items or?
No.
Okay. I have one item. So as you know, we are renegotiating our trash contract with Athens because we need to implement SB 1383, which sends all food, organic waste to a organics version facility. This is a state mandate. Every city has to do it. For the residential sector of the city, it's already happening. You're putting your food waste into a separate bin with your yard waste and it's getting, you know, hauled off. But we have to implement this for the commercial sector and the multi-family units. We also have to give everybody in the city new bins. That's a state requirement that have our, our color coded. And so we're working on this negotiation. We are having, we've brought the information to council as a discussion item about a month ago. We're having a community meeting next week, next Thursday, July 20th at 6:00 PM at this, at the community room at the library. And basically we'll have city staff, our consultant and Athens there available to sort of walk people through what this looks like, answer any questions before the council sort of finalizes, you know, how we're going to amend, restructure this contract. So looking forward to having people there.
Well, that's great. Well, thank you for the update on that. Any upcoming events, Rena, that we should be aware of?
Nothing I have on my end to renounce.
The only thing I'll mention is that a Royal Fest is coming back this year, October 29th. We will shut down Mission Street and part of Orange Grove and the 110 freeway from Glen Arm to just north of the five. And people can walk and run and.
And if you have not walked that, it's great.
First time in 20 years. Yeah.
It's absolutely wonderful. I remember when we did it the last time. And you get to listen to every bird and every river and every creek that we had back in the turn of the century.
Well, that's wonderful.
That's the first turn.
And Rena is reminding me, we'll be having our annual national night out at Orange Grove Park on August 1st at 6 o'clock.
Oh, that's right, too. Well, that's great. Well, wonderful. Anything else that we need to talk about? Sam, have you covered everything?
I think I've covered.
Ted's competing with you. He brought up some more dates for us. So with that said, thank you very much. Our July 12th Public Works Commissioners Meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned at 7:11 PM. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Meeting adjourned at seven eleven P M. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a date for the next one? So I can put it on the calendar.